Please let's take our seats. Okay, welcome to this evening's meeting. We're gonna have the invocation by Reverend Eddie Dowle of Light of Joy Church in Riverdale, be followed by the pledge of allegiance, if you would, stand with me.
Let us pray. Father God, we come tonight, Lord God, first of all, to say thank you. Lord God, we thank you for our being here, we thank you for life. We thank you, Lord God, for all that you have done here in Clayton County, Lord God. And Father God, we give you the highest praise, Lord God, because, Father God, if it were not for you, Lord God, we wouldn't be here tonight, Lord. We say thank you tonight, Lord God. Father God, we thank you for great leadership, Lord God, here in Clayton County. Lord God, we thank you, Lord God, for all that you are doing throughout this county, Lord God. Father God, we lift you up, Lord God, because, Father God, Lord God, our lives are in your hands, Lord God. And we thank you, Lord God, for the change that you have caused here in Clayton County. And Father God, our children are watching, Lord God. Help us, Lord God, to build safer communities for our children, Lord God. Help us, Father God, to be able to come together, Lord God, and represent you, Lord God. Help us to lift you up, Lord God, and not ourselves, Lord God. We thank you tonight, Lord God, because, Father God, the earth is yours and the fullness thereof. And we are here, Father God, to represent you well, Lord God. And we thank you, Father God. Now, Father God, we pray for protection over our commissioners, Lord God. Father God, we pray for protection, Lord God, over our sheriff department, Lord God. Father God, we pray for increase throughout this county, Lord God. We pray for blessings, Lord God, from on high, Lord God, that only you can give, Lord God. We give you the highest praise, Lord God, for all that you have done and for what you're doing now in the lives of your people, Lord God. We thank you, Lord. We say thank you, Lord.
Thank you, Lord.
Thank you, Lord, for being here tonight, Lord God. Thank you, Lord God, because you're using us, Father God, to move this county forward, Lord God. We give you the highest praise, in Jesus' name. Let every heart say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the June 6, 2017 Regular Business Meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Does any member want to offer any amendments? Hearing none, may we have a motion to adopt...
Chairman. Could we remove item number 25?
Say that again, I can.
Could we remove item number 25? That's in intergovernmental agreement with Water Authority, and it has not been completely negotiated by the lawyers yet.
All right, I'll make a motion to remove item number 25, the MOU with the... You said the Water Authority?
Second. Second.
Those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, this unanimous.
Are there any further amendments? Hearing none, may we have a motion to adopt the agenda with the approved amendment?
I'll make a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Probably move to second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this unanimous.
Approval of the May 16, 2017 Regular Business Meeting minutes and the Budget Hearing minutes.
Is there a motion?
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this unanimous.
The Board has four proclamations to present this evening. The first proclamation, Clayton County recognizes June 2017 as Caribbean American Heritage Month, as presented by Chairman Turner. With the recipients of this proclamation, please come forward at this time. As the members of the Board come down to join you for the presentation of the proclamation. We will now have the reading of the proclamation.
And the proclamation reads, Clayton County recognizes June 2017 as Caribbean American Heritage Month, whereas, the month of June recognizes National Caribbean American Heritage Month as a celebration for Caribbean people and their descendants in the history and culture of the United States. And whereas, Caribbean Americans have played an active role in the Civil Rights Movement and the Labor Movement, continuing to make important contributions to social and political issues. And whereas, Caribbean Americans have shaped every aspect of our society by enhancing our education, fine arts, business, sports, and science. And whereas, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognizes the significant contributions made by Caribbean Americans in economics, government, health and education, and other walks of life. And whereas, Clayton County celebrates the month of June by honoring Caribbean American Heritage Month, embracing friendships and camaraderie among neighbors. And whereas, Caribbean American Heritage Month represents a time of reflection on the history of ancestors and the journey that led them to the United States. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim June 2017 as National Caribbean American Heritage Month and recognize the contributions of Caribbean Americans to Clayton County, Georgia. I encourage all citizens to celebrate this recognition with appropriate ceremonies and activities highlighting the history and culture of Caribbean Americans. In witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed the sixth day of June in the year 2017. Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman.
And the next proclamation, Clayton County observes June 2017 as National Safety Month. With the recipients of this proclamation, please come forward. Risk Management Division. Emergency Management. Now, the reading of the proclamation.
And the proclamation reads, Clayton County observes June 2017 as National Safety Month, whereas, the Clayton County Central Services Department Risk Management Division provides solutions and support in the identification and minimization of the county's operations' risks through safety awareness in order to determine what it takes to protect the county's employees, properties, and assets. And whereas, during the month of June, the Clayton County Central Services Department Risk Management Division will follow the National Safety Month theme of "keep each other safe" in its upcoming activities. And whereas, the month of June has been designated as Safety Month by the National Safety Council and Safety and Risk Management Organizations throughout the world. Safety Month will focus on reducing the leading causes of injury and death at work, on the road, and in our homes and communities. And whereas, the Clayton County Central Services Department Risk Management Division will host a "June is National Safety Month" workshop with all Clayton County Department Safety Coordinators on June 6, 2017. And whereas, the Clayton County Central Services Department Risk Management Division will host an Active Shooter Preparedness Class each day from June 19 through June 23. The class will be conducted by the Clayton County Office of Emergency Management at the Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services Regional Training Center. And whereas, the Clayton County Central Services Department Risk Management Division will participate in the Clayton County Library Safety Fair on June 24, 2017. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2017 as National Safety Month in Clayton County, Georgia. I encourage all citizens to engage in special efforts during this month to recognize the importance of the role played by the Safety and Risk Management profession in business, industry, and government. In witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed the sixth day of June in the year 2017. Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman.
And now Clayton County recognizes the Clayton County Chaplain Corps, as presented by Commissioner Hambrick. Now, the reading of the proclamation.
And the proclamation reads, Clayton County recognizes the Chaplain Corps, whereas, each year Clayton County faces the threat of large-scale disasters and mass casualty events that may require faith-based services at a moment's notice. And whereas, Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services, along with the Office of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, realized a need for dedicated ecclesiastic services for citizens when these events occur and to incorporate neighboring jurisdictions. And whereas, a group of qualified chaplains were selected to serve as the Clayton County Chaplain Corps, to respond in times of crisis and provide spiritual care for the citizens as well as public safety personnel. And whereas, the Clayton County Chaplain Corps will be thoroughly trained in specialized topics, including Incident Command, Line of Duty Death, Suicide Prevention and Public Safety, Crisis Incident Stress Management, Understanding Post-Traumatic Stress Disorder, and Peacekeeping in Critical Incident Situations. And whereas, members of the Chaplain Corps will be an integral part of the Incident Command System, ensuring spiritual and ecclesiastic care are performed with dedication and professionalism. And whereas, the following chaplains will be considered the first members of the Clayton County Chaplain Corps: Ron Little, Dr. Leon Beeler, Stan Owen, Crystal Pritchett, Jerry Anderson, Roberto Torres, Mitzi Bicker, James Mayfield, Yolanda Walcott, Joe Durham, Wanda Curry, Sam Waldrop, Lavoris Holloway, Rodney Williams, Harry Riley, and Avery Jones. Now, therefore, I, Gailby Hambrick, Commissioner, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize and honor the Clayton County Chaplain Corps for their commitment to supporting the citizens of Clayton County, Georgia, during a time of crisis and need. In witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed the sixth day of June in the year 2017. Gailby Hambrick, Commissioner.
And the last proclamation for this evening, Clayton County recognizes the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month, as presented by Chairman Turner, with the staff of Parks and Recreation, as well as the Director, Mr. Troy Hodges, please come forward. Now, the reading of the proclamation.
And the proclamation reads, Clayton County observes July 2017 as National Park and Recreation Month, whereas, parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Clayton County, Georgia. And whereas, our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas, parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas, parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas, parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas, our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners observe the month of July as Park and Recreation Month and recognize the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim July 2017 as Park and Recreation Month in Clayton County, Georgia. I encourage all citizens to join me in this recognition and celebration by taking part in the many activities and programs that are offered through our Parks and Recreation Department. In witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed the sixth day of June in the year 2017. Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman.
And now, Mr. Troy Hodges, Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation, will acknowledge student recipients of the 2017 Scholarship Program of the Kids Outdoor Initiative. With the student recipients, please come forward at this time. We will have photographs first.
And basically, just to give you a brief idea, uh, history of the Kids Outdoor Initiative, we will take six, these are six of the 12 scholarship winners that will go down to the Fortson 4-H Center in Hampton, Georgia, um, this next weekend, and stay the weekend overnight and experience the outdoors, which most of them have never done that. We hope they'll, we hope they'll be all right.
And now, the reading.
The Kids Outdoor Initiative. For the sixth consecutive year, Clayton County Parks and Recreation Staff will chaperone Clayton County Middle School students on a three-day trip to a Georgia 4-H camp. This year, an additional student was chosen, increasing the participation number to 13. Students will visit Fortson 4-H Camp in Hampton, Georgia, from July 17 to the 19 to experience and study Georgia's natural environment. In 2009, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution supporting the Kids Outdoor Initiative and the Children's Outdoor Bill of Rights. This Bill of Rights recommends that every child by the age of 14 should have an opportunity to experience a list of 10 distinct outdoor activities, such as exploring nature, camping under the stars, following a trail, or playing on a team. The 7th and 8th grade students participating in this year's trip, courtesy of a scholarship provided from proceeds of the Lake Spivey Road Race, were chosen by submitting a 250-word essay describing the outdoor activity they wish to participate in, out of the 10 activities named in the Outdoor Bill of Rights. The winners of the 2017 competition are Cameron Eubanks, Kayemara Uabanks, Rochelle Gillian, Marcus Hamilton, Michael Lane, Amaria Moses, Danielle Quivens, Kayla Marie Schubrick, Elijah Walker, Kenya Warner, and Khalil White. Congratulations to these students.
The Board, we're now hearing an update on activities at Arts Clayton, as presented by Ms. Linda Chrissy, Arts Clayton Executive Director.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is my annual appearance before you due to summer camp. Before you, I want to caution, the ladies' bags have a breakable object in it, and these were donated by some of our artists at Arts Clayton for you to have, along with your t-shirt. This is our time to say thank you for your support and allowing us what we do. Part of what I wanted to share with you tonight is a part that, with everything we do, there's things go on behind the scenes. And each year, our Board of Directors engages in a fundraising effort among themselves to grant scholarships to our summer camp program. And in order to qualify for those, we get the names, we get contacted by various people in the community, and then the parent or the guardian makes a request as to why that is necessary. So, first of all, it's a great tool that engages our Board to participate in. But most of all, it allows us, then, to share a success story, success stories with you as to how we take what is given to us and we multiply it greatly in what we do. And I, last week, as we were wrapping up the registration, um, this, the lady that I'm going to introduce you and the children to is Nana. And Nana came in to make her annual trek to sign up her children. And her children are those that are in the neighborhood or that she knows or works with. And so, she, in what she did five years ago, she brings money to help pay partially for the boys and girls. And then, we, after the story is told for each child, then our committee makes the choice, makes the decision to send. But what Nana does is she requires those boys and girls to work, to participate in the, our library program, she requires them... in the, our library program, she requires them to work at Senior Citizens Home, she keeps them busy, and she keeps them gaining knowledge about what it is to participate in our society. And we've had several from this process that grow up, graduate from our schools, and then come back, and they intern with us, which helps the another middle, the other middle students. So I would just like to, to, for Nana to stand up, and the boys and girls she's brought with her tonight, and, and she's just one example of what we do, but it just happens it worked out for her to be here tonight. Nana? Summer camp is underway, it's our twenty-seventh year, and it's at Jackson Elementary, and, uh, again, I thank you for the support that you give to us, that allows us to, again, multiply, uh, what we have. Again, enjoy the gifts that have been donated, uh, by artists for you, with other little goodies in the bag, and I cannot guarantee that the T-shirt will fit. Every year, so, I think that they might, but if not, and you want another size, keep the one you've got to share, and then ask, then let me know if there's another one, uh, that you need. Our finale will be in two weeks, and some of you have participated in that, so if you'll let me know, you'll get the invitation, and if you can, join us, but thank you again very much for allowing us to continue to do things that make you proud. Thank you.
Thank you.
The board will now hear an Economic Development Update, as presented by Mr. Courtney Pogue, the Director of Economic Development.
Good evening Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners.
Good evening.
My name is Courtney Pogue, I am the Director of Economic Development for Clayton County, and before you, I'm giving you an update regards to our activities over the past few months, or twenty-four months, regards to economic development. Some of the topics are, um, economic updates, uh, real estate activity for the county, uh, 2016 capital investment and job creation, our business retention activities, business attraction activities, overall bond activity for the Development Authority, film Clayton activities, and our 2017 Go Scorecard. As far as the overall update for Clayton County, uh, the current population as of December 2016 was two-hundred-seventy-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-two people. That is the highest level in the history of Clayton County as far as the population. Our total wages and salaries for the county annually are roughly about five-point-two-billion dollars, which places Clayton County in the sixth best in the state of Georgia. We led the nation from first quarter of 2015 to 2016 as far as wage growth, and we continue to lead the region as far as the top five, as far as wage growth throughout 2016 and 2017. Retail sales in Clayton County are approximately three-point-nine billion dollars, up from three-point-four billion the previous year. Clayton, overall, was the last county to leave or exit the Great Recession, based on our gross domestic product, job creation, and private investment. We have finally left the recession, and we are stronger moving forward. As far as our total employment and labor force, our current labor force is roughly about one-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand people, which is also the highest level in the history of a county. There are currently roughly about one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand people working in the county as we currently speak. That's also the highest level in the history of the county. The unemployment rate in Clayton County, as I mean you know, has been a long slog. Over the past ten years, we had the highest level, being roughly about thirteen-point-five percent. I'm happy to say we have finally broken through the six percent barrier, which is the first time since November of twenty-two thousand and seven, that we have broken through the six percent unemployment rate barrier. We are currently at roughly five-point-eight percent as of April 2017. As far as the relates, real estate activities, Clayton County has the largest industrial sector in the southern metro. We have roughly forty-two point, forty-four-point-two million square feet comprised in eight, eight-hundred-and-seventy-two buildings. There's currently one-point-eight million square feet under construction, with one million square feet at Fort Gillum, or Gillowood, Gillum Logistics Center, and another eight-hundred-thousand square feet, the Clayton Commerce Center on Anvil Block Road, next to the Walmart. Our vacancies down to nine-point-four percent, uh, from fifteen-point-zero percent in two-thousand, twenty-thirteen, and our asking rents have increased to eight percent over the past fiscal year. Relates to office and retail, office, we have roughly five-point-three million square feet, and our retail is roughly nineteen million square feet, places of the largest and also in the southern metro. Vacancy in office down to thirteen-point-six percent, from twenty-two percent in two-thousand-and-thirteen, and retail vacancies eight-point-two percent, down from seventeen-point-eight percent in two-thousand-and-thirteen. Asking rents have increased by twenty percent over the past year, for retail, and some percent for office. As far as our activities for 2016, we set a goal of last year for fifty million dollars of private investment, we actually stimulated one-hundred-and-seventy million dollars of private investments. We set a goal of roughly a thousand jobs to be created, we actually created roughly two-thousand and fourteen new jobs. Some of our successes in 2016 include the one-hundred-and-seventy million dollars of private investment, which goes along with seven-hundred million dollars of private investment over the past three years. Our labor force is the largest in the southern crescent of Atlanta, and the sixth largest in the state of Georgia. Over the past three years, we have seen the career job creation of fourteen thousand new jobs over the past three years. That's something to be proud of. Last year, we surveyed over a hundred companies in regards to our online survey, we went out and spoke to these companies and got input from them in regards to things they would like to see in Clayton County. We also directly contacted a thousand companies, mainly focused on the logistics and manufacturing sector. We also supported small businesses in the sense of our Shark Tank, um, trial run, in which businesses interviewed with the Shark Tank producers to present their ideas and concepts, and also we had a Small Business Development Center, um, Start Smart class, and the Growth Smart class, in which twenty-nine businesses participated. As far as our regional, national, and international branding, we reached out to ten thousand individuals and companies over the past twenty-four months via our marketing strategy, from attending events, to the various newspapers and articles and publications. Uh, this is more or less a overview of the businesses that comprise the two-thousand-and-fourteen jobs that were, um, created for 2016. Over the past two years, we have reached out to eighty-plus businesses directly, uh, we have aided and retention of one company was actually looking to leave Clayton County, in which we practically went out and met with them, and they decided to stay in Clayton County. We also assisted in landing expansion projects that were looking at other states, and we were able to keep those projects here in Clayton County, um, by keeping those jobs and investment here in the county. As far as our business retention activities going forward, we plan to reach out to sixty businesses going forward this year. I'm happy to say, currently for fiscal year, uh, calendar year of twenty-six, seventeen, uh, we actually have reached out to thirty-five businesses, uh, so we're ahead of schedule regards to our business retention program. As far as our new job creation, uh, last year we did two thousand and fourteen, uh, this year we're projecting two thousand new jobs, and two hundred million dollars of private investment for the county, along with attracting roughly eighteen new projects, largely attracted seventeen projects. As far as the Development Authority Clayton County, last year we did four bond deals presented to the Development Authority Clayton County, which were one-hundred-and-twenty-seven million dollars, seven-twenty-seven-point-five million dollars, uh, in projects presented to the Development Authority. Those projects had a potential of creating roughly eight-hundred new jobs for the county, that was the most activity in four years. Some of the other activities that we supported were, the Development Authority supported were, um, the ULI TAP Study, the Georgia Logistics Summit, along with the Eretropolis and the Eretropolis CID. In regards to Film Clayton, the Film Clayton, Film Studio remains on schedule for a summer groundbreaking, uh, that represents a twelve-million-dollar new project for the county. Uh, Film Clayton plans to work closely with CSU, Clayton State, and the client to create a program to address training opportunities for Clayton County residents, along with, um, our activities for Film Clayton this year, we have shot or had, shot or produced roughly twenty films in Clayton County this year, uh, which were ahead of schedule, we have projected thirty films, so we have done twenty so far. And it relates to the new film studio, we plan to work with local business owners, and to ensure they are aware of the studio's inventory needs, and also work with them to attract new businesses to the county, um, that are looking to expand here in the county. Our current scorecard, uh, we projected two-hundred million dollars of private investment for 2017, we're currently at a hundred million dollars of private investment. As far as job creation, we have projected two thousand new jobs, we're currently at nine-hundred-and-seventy-five new jobs as far as creation, and as far as Film Clayton, we have projected thirty productions in county, in the county, we're currently at twenty productions, so we're well ahead of schedule. So one of the things that we definitely want to focus on for 2017 is workforce development, that is key to our success here in the county. When we surveyed most of our companies here in the county, that was the number-one issue, they were concerned about workforce development. Uh, we continue, we want to continue to promote the Mountain View area, as far as business attraction and development, and also look at other opportunities in the county to foster economic development activities. Uh, we also would plan to continue to partner with Clayton State and the Small Business Development Center, and also help create new business opportunities for our residents of Clayton County. With that, I open up to Q and A.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Pogue?
First, I want to say thank you, Mr. Pogue, for coming in and giving that, and I want to say why I asked you to do that. One of the things I noticed when, before I got in position, is that we never really heard from the Economic Development Director, um, and that's the one part that everyone is concerned about in our community. So it would be my goal that we would hear from the Economic Development Director at least once a month or once a quarter. Also, the other reason I wanted you to state that is because I know this board made some decisions recently about the Development Authority. I've done everything that I could to make sure that, I've overturned every stone that I could to make sure that we're moving forward in the right direction. But with that being said, I think it's important for the public to understand where we are with economic development. We are moving forward, I'm glad that you gave this report, and we can see that our numbers are up, but the challenge is, we're not getting the story out enough. We're going to vote on a budget, you all have all that information in your department, but it's not getting out to the mass public, and that's the one thing I heard the citizens say. So I want to say thank you, thank you for your thorough report, and I'm looking forward to even greater growth.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Pogue?
Let's have a statement. Courtney, I'd like to see the Office of Economic Development work, um, with our Department of Youth Services, in whatever way, you know, explore some opportunities for our young people, so maybe that's a collaboration we can do.
Yes, uh, me and the Director and COO actually met today.
Okay.
So we're working through that.
Alright.
And also, have you met with, um, I know that most recently, we made some decisions on the land bank. Have you had any discussions in regards to the land bank, and making sure that we have those, um, properties listed, as you and I discussed, on the state's website, so as those come into our state and looking for a place, um, to land, that we're right there? Have we made any movement with that, or at all?
No, we have not.
Well, let me say this, again, where you see success in other counties, is because they have a wonderful partnership with their Economic Development Department, and they actually own the land, so therefore they don't have to go through various individual owners, and they can come in and move in quickly. So thank you for stating that.
Any other questions, statements? Thank you for the presentation, and also if you haven't already done so, please, uh, email a copy or a presentation to each Commissioner.
And one more thing, you didn't state the fact that we were in the Atlanta Business Chronicle.
Oh, yes, we were in Atlanta Business Chronicle with a Clayton County Market Report on May 12th of 2017, that's the second year we have done the Clayton County Market Report to highlight Clayton County, and actually from that report, there have been a number of, um, phone calls as far as businesses actually wanting to locate to Clayton County.
Awesome.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The board will now consider requests of Director of Central Services, Carol Rogers. Ms. Rogers, please take them all together unless a board member, we'll take them separately. Here and now, please proceed.
Good evening Chairman and Commissioners. On behalf of Central Services, I have nine items to, uh, requests for your recommendation of approval. The first item is a recommendation for the Second Contract Amendment Change Order, and that's for RFB sixteen-dash-fifty-four, which is Jesters Creek Trail Enhancement, TE, Clayton County, Georgia. The request is to amend the current contract with Quantum Mac International, Inc., located in Marietta, Georgia, to install twenty-eight safety posts on the handicap access ramps, remove excess trees and additional survey costs, fabrication and modify existing handicap access ramps, ramps, and to extend the project by a hundred-and-twenty days. The extension is due to rain, fabrication issues, as well as permitting issues. The request is for a total of sixteen-thousand-eight-hundred-fifteen dollars and ninety cents. The Board of Commissioners approve the award on October the eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Funding is available through the federal TE grant, um, the Department Acceptance Letter, Contract Amendment, and Change Order are attached for your review and information. Next item is a recommendation for award of RFQ seventeen-dash-sixty-four, that's for batting cage fencing installation for Clayton County, Georgia. The recommendation is for the award to the overall lowest responsive and responsible bidder, meeting the specifications, which is McIntyre Fencing Company, located in Griffin, Georgia, in the total amount of sixteen-thousand-nine-hundred-forty-five dollars and eleven cents. Funding is available through the Community Development BACH Grant Funding Account, the Department Recommendation Memo, quote tabulation and agreement are attached for your review and information. Next item is a recommendation of award for RFQ seventeen-dash-one-zero-nine, which is fireworks for the two thousand and seventeen July fourth celebration at the Clayton County, Georgia International Park. The recommendation is to award to the overall lowest responsive and responsible bidder, meeting the specifications, that's East Coast Pyrotechnics, Inc., located in Catapult, South Carolina, in the total amount of eleven thousand dollars. The event will be held on Tuesday, July the fourth, two thousand and seventeen. Funding is available through the Parks and Recreation of the Contract Service Fees Fund, the Department Recommendation Memo, quote tabulation and agreement are attached for your review and information. Next item is a recommendation to utilize the Georgia statewide contract for the purchase of one two thousand and seventeen Ford F-350 truck from Wade Ford, Inc., located in Smyrna, Georgia, in the total amount of forty-two-thousand-two-hundred-eighty-one dollars and eighty-four cents. Funding is available through the two thousand and fifteen SPOSS program account. The Department Recommendation Memo, vendor quote, and statewide contract price sheet are attached for your review and information. Next item is a recommendation for award of RFB seventeen-dash-forty-nine, which is subgrade repair and concrete slab replacement at fire station number one for Clayton County, Georgia. The recommendation is to award to the overall lowest responsive and responsible bidder, meeting the specifications, that's Blue Ocean Construction, Inc., located in Afro-Reda, Georgia, in the total amount of one-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars. Funding is available through the Fire Department Reserve Fund. The bid tabulation, department recommendation, and agreement are attached for your review and information. Next item is recommendation for award of RFB seventeen-dash-forty-two, which is for the International Park Dam Water Supply Pipe Rehabilitation for Clayton County, Georgia. The recommendation is for award to the overall lowest responsive and responsible bidder, meeting the specifications, which is Integrated Construction and Nobility, Inc., located in Whitesboro, Georgia, in the total amount of four-hundred-seventy-seven thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Funding is available through the two thousand and four SPOSS funds. The bid tabulation, department recommendation, and agreement are attached for your review and information. Next item is a request for Central Services to sell county surplus property and equipment, which is number seventeen-dash-one-one-three. The request is for your approval for us to sell the items attached to your Exhibit A through our contract. The request is for your approval for us to sell the items attached to your Exhibit A through our contract with GovDeals located in Montgomery, Alabama. Next item is a recommendation of award of RFQ seventeen dash one one two, which is playground fencing and installation at Lovejoy Park, Clayton County, Georgia. The recommendation is for award to the overall lowest responsive and responsible bidder meeting the specifications, which is McIntyre Fencing Company located in Griffin, Georgia, in the amount of thirteen thousand six hundred forty dollars. Funding is available through the department's general fund account. The department recommendation memo, quote tabulation, and agreement are attached for your review and information. And the last item is recommendation of award of RFQ seventeen dash one one, which is hauling services for Clayton County, Georgia. The recommendation is to award to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder meeting the specifications, which is Faultless Business Center, Inc., located in McDonough, Georgia. Funding is available through the general fund and the two thousand four, nine, and fifteen SPOSS Funds. The department recommendation, bid tabulation summary, and agreement are attached for your review and information. I request for you to approve the recommendations, authorize the chairman and his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contracts, and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Okay, is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved and seconded. Any questions on any of the items? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
The board will now consider requests of Chief Financial Officer Ramona Bivens.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair, and Commissioners. I have two items for your consideration this evening. Budget amendment two dash twenty-five is for the general fund, fire fund, and E nine one one fund. It's to establish funding for the Automatic Vehicle Location System for Clayton County Public Safety by transferring four hundred sixty-four thousand eighty-two dollars from the general fund, one hundred six thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars from the fire fund, for a total amount of five hundred seventy thousand three hundred thirty-seven dollars into the E nine one one fund. Budget amendment two dash twenty-six is for the fire fund. It's to amend the budget in the amount of one hundred sixty-three thousand dollars from the fire fund balance for subgrade repair and concrete slab replacement at fire station number one.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make the motions. There a second?
Second.
Any questions on either item? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed.
Thank you.
Uh, four one. Uh, Commissioner Warner was opposed.
Thank you.
Interim Chief Staff Attorney Jack Hancock.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, I have one ordinance, two resolutions, and eight department requests for your consideration.
Uh, please take them together.
All right, sir. Ordinance number two seventeen, two thousand seventeen forty-five is an ordinance to amend the code of Clayton County, Georgia, as amended specifically to delete Part One, Chapter Two Administration, Article Four Purchases and Property Disposition, and replace it with a new article entitled Purchases and Property Disposition to li- to delete Part One, Article Two, Board of Commissioners, Section two eighteen through two twenty-one, to repeal conflicting laws and ordinances and resolutions, to provide for severability, to provide for an effective date of this ordinance, and for other purposes. Resolution two thousand seventeen forty-six is a resolution of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners consenting to the expansion of the Airport South Community Improvement District. Attached to the resolution as Exhibit B is a draw- is a map depicting the area that will be added, and as Exhibit A, there is a list of the five parcels to be added to that CID. They have a total appraised value of four million six hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. Resolution two thousand seventeen-
Hold on a second, Ms. Adams. I, I apologize for not painting my glossary, but could we consider se- forty-seven for the budget separately?
Yeah, we had another request. Okay, take forty-seven separate.
All right, sir. Um, item number nineteen is, excuse me, item number eighteen is an intergovernmental agreement. Uh, the Department of Transportation and Development is requesting the Board of Commissioners approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Clayton County Water Authority for the installation of a sanitary sewer line for fire station number nine. The agreement will authorize the Water Authority to install the necessary facilities to reestablish the sanitary sewer connection to fire station number nine located on Old Dixie Road. The Water Authority is, eh, eh, Water Authority's estimate is, and please note, this is a change from what is on your agenda. The estimate is two hundred and six thousand dollars rather than the one hundred and seventy-six that shows on the agenda. Funding is available in the two thousand and four SPOSS Program. Further, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the res- of the agreement, to authorize the, excuse me, the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. And item nineteen, the Department of Parks and Recreation requests the Board of Commissioners approval of a memorandum of understanding between the Clayton County Parks and Recreation Department and the Clayton County School District to allow for the complimentary and reciprocal use of identified properties and facilities. Further, authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement. Item twenty is a request from the Parks and Recreation Department that the Clayton County Board of Commissioners approve a license agreement with Micabayan, Georgia, Inc., to utilize Clayton County International Park for a five K run and a Filipino Independence Day celebration on Saturday, June the tenth, two thousand seventeen. Further, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, as may be required under the terms of the agreement. Item twenty-one, the Clayton County Department of Parks and Recreation requests the Board of Commissioners consideration of a special facility use request submitted by Senator Gail Davenport for the Clayton County Black History Center to utilize Clayton County Parks and Recreation Mobile Stage and Staff on June twenty-fourth, two se- two thousand seventeen for the June tenth event at Arnold Park. The department fee recommendation is two thousand sixty dollars, which includes two thousand dollars for the rental of the stage and sixty dollars for two staffers for three hours. However, the matter is before the board because Senator Davenport is requesting that the Board of Commissioners waive the stage rental fee. Further, authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this request, or authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. Request, uh, number twenty-two is from the Police Department, and that is for the sale of a seized vehicle to be sold at auction. The vehicle is a silver two thousand Monte Carlo SS VIN two GIWX one two KOY nine two nine seven one five nine. The final order civil in civil action file number two thousand seventeen CV zero zero six four oh dash nine. Proceeds from the sale of the vehicle will be placed into the city sharing account number two two one. Further, authorize the chief financial officer, Central Services, and Fleet Maintenance to take all actions necessary to achieve the intent of this request. Item twenty-three is a request also by the Police Department for permission to retain unclaimed property in its custody pursuant to OCGA Section seventeen dash five, S fifty-four E. The Police Department petitioned Superior Court of Clayton County for an order to retain this property, and the court granted the petition in Civil Action File Number two thousand seventeen CV zero zero nine three three dash eleven. Further, authorize the chief financial officer, Central Services, and the chief operating officer to take all actions necessary to achieve the intent of this request. And item twenty-four is also a request from the Police Department for permission to retain evidence property in its custody pursuant to OCGA Section seventeen five fifty-four E. The Police Department petitioned the Superior Court of Clayton County for an order to retain this property, and the court granted the petition in Civil Action File Number two thousand seventeen CV zero one 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 seven dash ten. Further, authorize the chief financial officer, Central Services, and the chief operating officer to take all actions necessary to achieve the intent of this request. Item number twenty-six is a request from the Clayton County Human Resources Department that the Clayton County Board of Commissioners approve utilization of Kaiser's proprietary electronic workforce health program for this participants of Kaiser's Lifestyle Health Plan. Human Resources is requesting the board to approve both a letter of agreement and the disclosure agreement. There's no financial impact, uh, as to the costs associated with this agreement are being waived by Kaiser. Further, no, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and perform, uh, necessary acts to accomplish the intent of the agreement.
All right, is there a motion? Yes. Yeah, twenty-five came on. I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of the items?
I have a question. Go ahead.
Commissioner Amerson.
Number fifteen. Can't get back to it. I don't know what IT is. I can't get back to my-
Item number forty-five.
Um,
Which one was fifteen?
The ordinance.
The one about the, uh,
Forty-five.
Right, changing the, uh,
It's item number forty-five.
Purchasing code?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I, I just can't get back to it.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, yeah.
I don't know what IT is.
Number fifteen is the ordinance that, that rewrites the purchasing code.
Okay, now, does that have anything to do with us having to go through, or the way we go through state, um, contracts and all?
No, ma'am.
That's, okay.
That's separate. You've already done that.
What was that now?
You've already done that.
Okay.
You've already passed a resolution dealing with the U- with, with, uh, the, uh, local preference with regard to state contracts.
Okay, and we can bypass that?
Yes, ma'am.
Legally.
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Emerson, you have something.
Item number twenty-one, special use permit. Just to make sure I'm understanding it, the, the consideration before us is to consider the approval of the recommended fees by the department?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, excuse me. Though, then,
It says to waive right in there.
Not the way it read, but, but what I'm told is that, that the, that the, what is before you is a request to waive the fees of, by Senator Davenport.
Mr. Chairman, can we consider this one separately?
Yeah, right, but, so two thousand of the two thousand and sixty.
Okay, you still want to take a second?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What number was, what number was that?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Mm-hmm.
All right, I will amend my motion to accept all for approval except for item twenty-one, which we'll take separately. Uh, is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Any questions on any of, any, uh, discussion on this item? Those in favor, aye. Opposed. It's unanimous. Now, the approval on the rest of them. There's a first and a second. Any further discussion?
And which ones?
On the remainder.
We need to take those separately.
Everything but twenty-one and-
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Yes.
Seventeen, excuse me.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous.
So the record will hopefully stay clear. If we can go back to twenty-one first since I've already read that, uh, then, then that, that is the request for, uh, waiver of two thousand dollars of the, uh, fee recommended by the department.
Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion of denial.
Is there a second? Is there a second? All right, fails due to the lack of a second. I make a motion to approve as long as it's stipulated that she will pay for the staffers' fee or salary. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Uh, Commissioner Hambrick, second. Any questions?
I have a question. So this says that she will pay for the staff needed in the rental fee. So you're talking about paying the two thousand or not paying the two thousand?
Not paying the two thousand. That be, that being waived, then the sixty dollars go towards the staffers who have to maintain it. Any other questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
It's four one, Mr. Emerson was opposed. Next.
Yes, sir. Resolution two thousand seventeen forty-seven is a resolution providing for the adoption of the Clayton County Fiscal Year two thousand eighteen budget to provide for the appropriation of expenditures and accounting of anticipated funding sources to provide for the circumstances under which the budget may be amended by the Board of Commissioners, the chairman, or the chairman's designee, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the amendments to the budget as presented by the chief financial officer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
I, I just would like to get a couple of points from Mr. Chairman if you could. Ms. Bivens, excuse me.
From, from a, from a parliamentary procedure standpoint, I think we'd be better off if you took a motion on the resolu- on the adoption of the budget, and then if you want to amend it afterwards, then it's on the floor for amendment.
Well, I want to amend the proposed budget prior to consideration of adoption of the proposed budget.
Okay.
Did I do it okay if I did it that way?
In saying that way, we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening again. Um, on Friday, I emailed you a amendment, some amendments to the two thousand eighteen recommended budget. Um, the, the total budget will remain the same. The, what we did, we increased additional personnel for the sheriff, for sheriff deputy twos for the sheriff's office by adding seven deputy twos and deleting two correctional officers at a cost of three hundred two thousand four hundred fifty-seven dollars. We're proposing to increase additional personnel for Police Department, five sergeants, um, at no cost because we will be utilizing, um, they have over, a little over fifty vacant positions. So we'll be utilizing funds from some of those to take care of those sergeant positions. There's a reclass for community development in the amount of one hundred ninety-two thousand three hundred forty-three dollars. We added some positions for the new Office of Sustainability and Planning. It was previously presented, I believe, as the Office of Planning and Zoning. But we've added, um, increasing an additional personnel for Principal Secretary in the amount of forty-nine thousand nine hundred forty-two dollars, and a six thousand dollars for additional funding for office supplies and traveling and training for the increased staff in that office. And then an additional two thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars as additional compensation for non-public safety media contact. Um, we have a lot of, an increased, um, request from the media after hours, so they would provide some funding for employees that would have to respond to those after hours. So the total amount is five hundred fifty-three thousand seven hundred forty dollars. However, to offset that increase in expenses, we're going to increase the number of frozen positions, which will, um, uh, will take, cover that cost of five hundred fifty-three thousand seven hundred forty dollars. So the total general fund budget is two hundred million fifty-four thousand three hundred seventy-eight. And the total overall budget, including all funds, would be three hundred thirty-two thousand eight hundred fifty-two, I'm sorry, three hundred thirty-two million eight hundred fifty-two thousand seven hundred seventy-three dollars.
Any other questions? I have one question in addition to that for Chief Woodall. This is in reference to your request for enhancement, and I say yours, but it was the previous chief's-
Yes, sir.
Uh, request, and that is for five additional sergeants.
Yes, sir.
My question is, why are we not asking for police officers as opposed to sergeants?
Currently, we do have fifty-one openings. Um, although we've stepped up our recruitment, uh, I do not anticipate being able to fill all those fifty-one openings within the next twelve months. Um, because we're on a ten-hour shift right now, eh, in an effort to keep our recruitment and our retention levels at a higher rate, and something the officers wanted. We need the additional supervision at this time. Those five positions will be, uh, put into the uniformed division. All those uniformed, uh, or all those sergeants are uniformed officers and first responders. They are working supervisors. They will be out answering those calls for service as well. And it will add a marked car and a marked and uniformed officer for each one of those shifts during those busiest peak times. That's what we're looking for, is that the increase in visibility and availability for calls for service.
Thank you.
I have a question, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I know you mentioned we have fifty-one positions open, because I know a lot of people come up for public comment-
Yes, ma'am.
Saying we need more, uh, police-
Yes, ma'am.
And all, so are we working on that?
We are diligently working on it. Our problem is, is in the law enforcement profession right now, as you know, nationwide, we're, uh, we are at an impasse in reaching the qualified candidates. I don't want to sacrifice, uh, uh, quantity for the quality of people. We are working diligently at it, and, uh, um, our efforts are being rewarded. We're trying to fill up academy classes as quickly as we possibly can and make those productive officers on the road for our citizens.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The, um, the, the budget before us, the proposed budget before us includes a, uh, I believe, a one percent COLA, cost of living, increase for all county employees, as well as a one and a half percent- a half percent increase for public safety.
I believe it was a one point two-five, yes, sir.
One point two-five?
Is that correct?
So a total of two point two-five for public safety. Will that include, will that, will that, will that go towards these new positions being created as well? Okay. All right, thank you.
So where would that, can I ask a question? Couple of them. So where would that put us in stance of how we will be paying compared to our other jurisdictions? Because percentage-wise, that sounds good, but in terms of the salary, and I don't know if that's Ms. Ambles' question, but where will be, we be in comparability to the other areas?
I do, I do believe it makes us comparable. The other things we're doing at the Police Department and, and through the Commission is we've, we've adjusted hours. Our police officers have indicated that they wanted these ten-hour shifts. The ten-hour shifts are beneficial to us as well as the individual police officers' family lives, and I think that is a, a big issue working towards recruitment and retention to keeping these folks here. These other five positions we're talking about, that's the first level of supervision. That's five more positions that patrolmen that might have been thinking of leaving may be escalated into a supervisory position, and we'll retain them and keep their skill level and, and their workforce here with us.
Okay. One more question, and I, I think I know the answer, but if you could state it for everyone. How often are you all graduating out new cadets? Because I know you mentioned that you're working diligently.
Our academy is eighteen weeks long. Right now, we're running co-aside or concurrent academies. Every nine weeks, we start a new academy class. There are some discussions about shortening the academy length right now. I'm working with our new staff to see if we can condense some of that training, making the training period shorter, but still getting all the training that they need to be functional solo police officers.
Thank you.
Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me, you said ten hours a day. How many days a week?
It's four days.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
They're on four and off three. Any other questions? Thank you, Chief, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I can't remember whether there was a second, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, we're ready for a vote.
Okay.
And that's, let me make sure.
What's your name?
And for me, for the sake of me, let me make sure I understand it clearly because on listed here, we've got to vote on the budget, and then it was stated to vote on the budget as it's amended as well. Is that correct?
Right, all I'm doing is applying this page to the blue book.
Okay, I just want to understand it correctly.
I'm going to change two thousand and seventeen forty-seven before you vote on it again, so go ahead.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
One more question, I'm sorry.
And one more question.
And it does still include the change with the legal department that has not changed?
This is, you're only voting on these amendments.
These amendments, okay, I got it now.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
Now, resolution two thousand and seventeen forty-seven will now be a resolution providing for the adoption of the Clayton County Fiscal Year two thousand and eighteen budget as amended to provide for the appropriation of expenditures and accounting of anticipated funding sources, provide for circumstances under which the budget may be amended by the Board of Commissioners, the Chairman, or the Chairman's designee to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions?
I do, I just want to make sure we're stating for the, for everyone to hear. We hear amendments. I don't want people to get confused and think that there's been amendments that have not been made. So we're still deleting our legal department and we're going to give the services to Freeman Mathis and Gary, correct? Is that what we're doing?
Assuming that the legal department is, note, is not in the budget and that as the county attorneys, we will undertake the, to perform the duties that were being performed by the legal department, yes.
Okay. Also, there were discussions about the fact that your firm would be willing to pay rent. Did that change in this budget?
There's nothing in the budget about that whatsoever. We certainly, we've had a discussion with, with the COO regarding the terms for undertaking on a fixed fee basis, the services that we will be, not only the items that we'll be taking over from the legal department, but also the items that we would include into that fixed fee amount that we are presently billing by the hour for.
Okay. And then another question, we're going to discuss later about the employee benefits and looking at that, because I know that's been tabled for a while, and I'm looking at the budget in terms of what's budgeted for the employee benefits.
I can't speak to that one just yet.
Okay.
Yes, Commissioner, the goal is, the health, our HR department has been working with our benefits manager as well as looking at those bids. We anticipate bringing that in the form of a discussion and potential approval from the Board at the next Board meeting.
So we'll see possibly some adjustments in that area?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
I have a question, Mr. Stanford. I understand that the travel budget in the Board of Commissioners was, was requested to be increased.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Could you explain that? I can't find it in here.
Yeah, so Commissioner, the book is not broken out by the respective line items, but based upon, again, the, the, all the discussions we have to board about potential impacts on the budget, that was one of the increases on the line items that, which we actually increased based upon the need for additional travel and training, primarily with Commissioner Warner and some of the.
Because I'm new.
How much did you ask for?
I'm going through the certification course, I'm new. I don't even know how much it is.
Sure, but I mean, I didn't, all of us went, but, so how much is the increase in travel?
I don't know, that's given to us through ACCG. Can you please, somebody provide that?
I don't remember off the top of my head, but I think we increased travel by about ten thousand dollars, and we also added funding in there for signage for all the commissioners for the various events that you have throughout the county. TND had been previously taken those out of their budget, but we moved that to under Commissioners' budget.
Is that ten thousand dollars for just Ms. Warner's travels?
No, sir.
No, and I knew he was.
That's overall.
So what's the signage? What's the signage you're talking about?
There are different signs that TND put up for.
At recreation centers.
Correct.
Yeah, all of those things.
Which has been requested.
And, like, we're having the, the meetings with the.
Correct.
Yes, all of those things.
Regarding trash. That is correct.
And all that, we put up signs.
And let me, can I please state this because I know that that was kind of thrown out there for whatever reason? As a new Commissioner, we, through, we are members of ACCG, and it's recommended that we become certified commissioners. Basically, it means that if you're going to do a job, learn to do your job, and after I become certified, I will be glad to tell you that I think the ladies are the only ones that are certified on the Board at that point. So I do apologize, I don't want you all to think that I just came in and increased the budget. It's called a class that I have to take to learn to do my job, and it's through the association that we are all members of throughout the state of Georgia.
Thank you.
Okay, I have two questions or at least one statement, and a question, and that is, first of all, I just wanted, for the record, to state how, I guess I just said it, right? Disappointed I am about how we came about deleting the legal department without further discussion amongst the full Board. Not very happy with that process at all, but at the same time, one of my major concerns is always my employees, and that is, I hope that there has been an opportunity for the employees upstairs to have continued employment, whether it's with us or your firm or wherever else, that we looked into that. Never want to leave an employee high and dry without cause.
And, and I believe that that is an accurate statement. I'm certain with regard to all but one, that that is an accurate statement, and that one's been out of town for about three weeks or so, and so hadn't had an opportunity to deal with it, but everybody else will either be, become employees of our firm or there've been other opportunities provided to them within the county.
Can, can I make a statement to that?
Yes.
That doesn't give my heart solace because then that means all our great talent is going someplace else. So I, I thank you for stating that, but I don't know.
Okay, any other questions, statements? Hearing them, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Nay.
It's four one, passes.
We need executive session on one litigation matter, Mr. Chairman.
The next six items on the agenda are streetlight petitions. Mr. Chairman, did you want me to take them together?
Yes, take them all together.
Okay. The first are streetlight petition addition to existing streetlight district Walnut Creek subdivision. The next is Roundtree Forest subdivision. The next is Carlton Estates subdivision. The next one, this is a new streetlight district. It would be Thornhead subdivision. The next is an existing streetlight district, Wingate Hill subdivision, and Smith Lake Cove subdivision. May we have a motion?
Is there a motion to approve? I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous, next.
The next three items are appointments to the Development Authority and the Urban Redevelopment Agency of Clayton County. The first is to fill the.
Admiral Clark, I'd like to hold the appointments on the Development and Redevelopment Authority. I just got those, I just got those, and I offer that in the form of a motion. We just got those, what, Friday?
Got what Friday?
The letters from Mr., from Larry?
And I came in before Friday.
Okay, that's everything.
Well, he, he has a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Nay.
Three two, it passes. Just for the record, you were talking about the two for Larry Vincent and for.
No, sir, I said the, the, the appointments. Yes, sir.
Okay, we've been, okay, it passes.
Mr. Chairman, I did just want to mention for the record, we did receive a letter of resignation from Larry Vincent as well as Tamika West.
Right, I'm clear, and the appointment, or reappointment, well, the Eldron Bell seat, we've been holding for a while, so why you would want to hold all of them is beyond me, but.
And can I please make a statement, and it's not to argue or fight, but I'm going to say this. This is an appointment. However, when it comes down to making financial decisions, we get things all the time at the last minute, and constantly I'm asking to wait twenty-four hours, but we never do it. So we need to move forward with this, even though it's, you know, it's done, and I want to say thank you to those that served. It's not a surprise. Thank you to those that served us very well.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to mention, Ms. West has talked to me extensively, and she's just.
Same for me.
Decided to go into another direction, and it, what she conveyed to me, that's just simply her reasons, just wanting to go in another direction.
Can I please speak because Ms. West actually lives in my district, and she represents mainly my district?
Ms. Tamika West?
Ms. Tamika West.
She lives in Peachtree Landing in Ellenwood.
Okay, well, let me say this. She did state to me as well that she cannot, and she gave me permission, she said that she cannot risk her bar license with the decisions that have been made by this Board to continue to serve.
All right, let's move on.
Okay. Item number thirty-six, this is an appointment to the Family and Children's Services Board to fill the expiring term of Keisha Wright Hill. The term is five years, expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. This is a full Board appointment. Are there any nominations?